Good evening, everybody. We have, I'll do the quick math, seven present, so there's a quorum. The chairman is out of town, and so, and we need to make a motion to second it and actually have a vote of those present for our chairman of the day.
I want to make that motion. It's probably as chairman of the day, vote out.
I second.
There's a discussion about that. Quickly, yesterday.
Well, Earl and I had a little discussion as we were walking from the front door to the entrance door.
Yes, somebody went over. There was no question, there was a discussion. Well, with that, we will talk.
So, unanimous consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The other thing I'll make note, Ways and Means is meeting tonight. It's a busy time for Merrill candidates. We have two Merrill candidates, the members of the commission. So, I am a designated of the chairman of the Transportation Committee of the Board of Alderman, which is light up. So, I'll be a voting member of the Biden Commission tonight.
Thank you.
With that, Earl, the floor is yours.
I always wanted to do that. David, would you call the room, please?
Alderman Boyd, not present. Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Whoops. Commissioner Rowe.
Fair enough, present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Strather.
Present.
Chair Visitainer, not present, and Alderman Cruzin, not present.
So, with that, we have a quorum. Let me do it.
The next order is the approval of minutes from January 4th, 2017. They were sent out this week or earlier. You asked to review them, any question, any motion to approve.
Second.
They've been moved and seconded. Free order.
Oh, we didn't have a lot.
And I'm free to say. And if you take the.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Stay.
Commissioner Rowe.
Upstate.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Harris.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Upstate.
Motion passes with four ayes and three extensions.
With that, we have fairly a short agenda. The first one is zoning, which Roman will be presenting to us under PDA 00917 Rac. Roman, have your way.
Good evening, Chairman. Can you back up a little bit, please? This is a proposed rezoning of a single dual zone parcel located at 2510 Mitchell Avenue, and it's located near the corner of Mitchell Avenue and Manchester Avenue in the Franz Park neighborhood. The site is about a little over two acres in size. You can see it's triangular in shape. Existing use is a vacant lot, and the petitioner for this rezoning would like to sell the parcel to Life Storage Incorporated, which is the owner of an existing self-storage facility which is located adjacent to the site, and would like to build another self-storage facility on that particular site. And just to be clear, the existing one would remain, and a new one would be built next to it. The petitioner is Antoinette Walling, who owns the site, and representing the petitioner is civil engineering design consultants Brandon Hart, off to my left here, is with the firm and will be available for freshings. Don mentioned there's a couple of Aldermen who are at the Ways and Means Committee meeting tonight, and one of those people there is Alderman Scott Ogilvy, who represents the area. Just wanted to ask if you didn't notice in your, in your zoning resolution that Alderman Ogilvy has elected not to commit a letter of support for this property. This is an existing zoning map for the area, and as you can see, the northern portion of the area is zoned to the East District, Walling District, while the southern portion of the site is zoned J, Industrial District. In these cases, where you have, you've got some zoning districts, as you know, the zoning district with a more restrictive zoning regulations takes precedence, and in this case, a self-storage facility is not allowed in the B zoning district, and the petitioner has requested the facility rebuilt to the G local commercial and office district. Now, the G zoning district allows self-storage facilities, but it does not allow it as a use by right. In other words, it's not automatically afforded at this particular site. It's approved under the conditional use permit process, in which a use would have some conditions applied to that particular project to make it more compatible with the adjacent uses. This is an aerial photo from 2015 of the site. The, I mentioned it's a vacant lot, it's fenced on all three sides, and it'll just run through the adjacent land uses. To the south, here are three vacant lots that are also owned by the petitioner. Across Mitchell Avenue is Columbo's Cafe and Tavern and Restaurant Depot, which is a wholesale restaurant operation. Tech Electronics, which is a fast-growing firm, there's a cluster of buildings here at the intersection of Manchester and Dale. On the south side of Manchester is St. Louis Marketplace, which many of you know is a major shopping center that's now going for a transition stage to other uses. Back on the other side of Manchester is Vince Jack's Metals, which is a metal scrapyard, and this is the existing Life Storage, self-storage facility. And then immediately to the west of the rezoning site is a series of six family, single-family homes that front onto Mitchell Terrace, and whose backyards are facing the rezoning site. So, there's a lot of different types of uses in proximity to the rezoning site. These are some photos of the rezoning site. On the right, you can see in the distance some of those homes that are located along Mitchell Terrace. Immediately to the south of the three vacant lots that I referenced, occasionally they're used as parking lots. As I mentioned, they're owned by the rezoning petitioner, and according to the petitioner's representative, there are immediate plans for redeveloping that contingent along Manchester. Across Mitchell is Columbo's Cafe and Tavern. My understanding is the, while the cafe is owned by a private business, the building and the land underneath it is also owned by the petitioner. To the right is the Restaurant Depot, which has been there for about 10 years. This is Tech Electronics, good, fast-growing firm. Unfortunately, they bought their space and are looking to relocate elsewhere. St. Louis Marketplace, as you're aware, Kmart is nearly out of there. That's the last of the big boxes that were developed 15, 20 years or so ago, and as you can see on the tenant sign, none of the tenants there is a store. It's looking to attract other commercial tenants and that space. On the other side of Manchester is the metal scrapyard. It's allowed in the J zoning district, and as you can see, it's sort of a messy operation. This is the existing Life Storage firm. Until recently, the firm was called Uncle Bob's Self-Storage. The firm is based out of Buffalo and has self-storage facilities located throughout most of the eastern United States. Photo on the left is the entrance to the facility on Manchester Avenue, and the photo on the right is looking westward from the vacant lots in Manchester. Lastly, these are the single-family homes that are located along Mitchell Terrace. The photo on the left shows the frontages along the street, and the photo on the right shows the rear yards of those parcels, which are a lot of the facilities. This is the conceptual site plan that was submitted by Mr. Hart, representing the petitioner. The red line is the parcel boundary line for the rezoning site. As you can see, only the southern portion of the rezoning site will be used as part of this development project. There apparently are no plans to redevelop northern portions of the site at this point. The yellow line indicates the vehicular entrance into the site off of Mitchell Avenue, shows how it connects up with the existing Life Storage Facility, and also shows the surface parking spaces. The green line is the outline of the building footprint. Building will be two stories, have about 30,000 square feet of space, and will be climate-controlled. And the blue line is a strong water detention basin. These are some elevations that were submitted by the petitioner's representative. Three of the sides of the building will have metal siding, and the front will have some sort of a driving exterior. As you know, most of these buildings aren't designed for aesthetic purposes, mostly for functional reasons. This is the city's strategic land use plan, and again, as you can see, the northern portion of the site designated as a neighborhood development area, shown in orange. Southern portion is designated as an opportunity area. An opportunity area is basically an underutilized site located in a spot that's going some sort of a transition of land use, and that's appropriate for the site. And that designation also provides some flexibility in terms of what kinds of land uses, or what sort of development can take place, whether it be residential, or commercial, or industrial. In this case, a self-storage facility may not be the ideal use for this particular site, but in combination with the conditional use permit process, it will provide an opportunity for some conditions to potentially be applied and make it more compatible with some of the adjacent land uses. In terms of comments, the rezoning of this parcel would achieve three objectives, according to the city zoning administrator. It would allow for the reuse of that vacant parcel and provide for viable business in the immediate area. The rezoning should conformly with the strategic land use plan and statute recommended approval. Brandon Hart, on the left, is again with civil engineering design consultants.
Terrell.
And Terrell, too, representing the city, is looking at the zoning committee.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Questions?
Hey, Roman, any particular reason why there's no support? Wonder if Alderman Ogilvy?
Well, I think it's fair to say he, at this point in time, is not in favor of the rezoning. He has some specific concerns about the development. He'd like to see the site developed, but doesn't think this would be the best type of use for this.
Can I also address that?
Please.
I've spoken with Alderman Ogilvy several times on this project, and what he would like to see on this was a use variance, so it would be approved just for this use, not for a total zoning district. That can't happen, according to the city planning department. So, G was the more, most restrictive zoning district that we could go to then to get a conditional use permit for this use. He did tell me that he was okay with the use, the use of a climate-controlled self-storage building, but he didn't want this to be, say, a J desert realistic opening up to all those different uses on this property. He further has told me that he does have some concern on the building look and the site plan, but the building look and the site plan weren't required for this petition. They were just a demonstrated density-type use, and so, we look forward to working with him and the Neighborhood Association between now and the HUD public hearing to develop a plan and elevation that he's comfortable with.
So, in general, he's not opposed to it, and you're working with him?
He's not opposed to the climate-controlled self-storage use.
Yes. And if you are working with him as far as the elevation, then?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
If an Alderman is opposed to something, do they typically write a letter, or is it either support or no force?
We'd rather show up.
Yeah, sure. Show up showing up, yes.
They're welcome to show up. The, I'm going to make a couple of comments about what you said in a minute, is, we're going to be pretty precise here, is, we can change the zoning for a property. You can, with the Alderman doing ordinance. The only other entity that can change the zoning is a petitioner from the property owner, and then an owner-to-tenant. So, we're the ones that are obligated to look at the petition, and we have a time slot to do it. As a courtesy, we ask the applicant, the petitioner, to contact the Alderman and see if they'll give a support letter. And that indicates that there's support, not that we need that to act, but it does a pragmatic thing to say, it's not going to the finish line without the Aldermanic support, so get it up front. He has not provided one. He has a series of concerns, as you articulated, some variations with that, but he does have a series of concerns. He would like to engage with them, like you said, a little bit more rigorously than has been in the past. And with that said, there are two elements of what we're doing here tonight, is, he is the one that will ultimately have to support it as an ordinance. Ordinances are not, board bills are in hiatus now because of the recess of the Board of Alderman, so that's going to be a while, which gives you, you have to make a more direct connection with them, and that's number one, to do that. And then, second, is this particular zoning category does what was articulated, is, in a J zone, this use would be, if we were to rezone the whole parcel from a split of J and B to all J, he'd walk in and get a permit. But it's a mixed-use parcel, so we're rezoning it, and the proposal is to G. And you heard Roman say, and you heard the gentleman say, that requires a conditional use process, and to get that particular use consummated here, and that particular means that there'll be, there would be a public hearing at the Board of Alderman, and a public hearing at the conditional use process, and the conditional use processes allow some of those things to be consummated about how the site is used, and to some degree, the physical features and that type of thing. So, approving it tonight sets the stage for some rigorous conversations with the Alderman. He has the control of entering it, into the Board of Alderman or not. And then, second, is, what we're doing would then create that conditional use process, which gives the ability to add some conditions.
Good question I have on the footprint, and I'm trying to understand why you would not use a parcel that is located on Manchester north, and still leave the, I'm sorry, Manchester south, and still leave the western parcel, this northern parcel empty. So, why are you leaving this empty and not fronting that facility?
To the best of my knowledge, that parcel's not for sale. What's for sale is the parcel that's outlined in red.
So, you don't, oh, they don't own that parcel?
They own it, but I think they use it as overflow parking for their Columbos. I think they use that as overflow parking.
They own Columbos also?
They own the way of the building. Yeah.
Right, the Columbos lease, they run it, but Tony Walling, Antoinette Walling owns the
Columbo's property and that parcel, and the parcel of red. So, the property that Life Storage has on our contract is the one with the red around it. The footprint of the building that you see, and the parking, et cetera, that was never a plan to make any form of smitten. That was a, how, what, how much building can fit on this site? And when we originally laid this out, we had obtained the city zoning maps, and we thought we were in the J because of the split zoning down the middle. We didn't realize we were going to have to rezone. We thought the zoning line was allowed to go through a parcel, a lot of municipalities do allow that. So, we thought we were J, and that's why we tucked that thing down to the south. As we work with Alderman Ogilvy in developing this plan, I can see the site plan changing to work with a possible redevelopment along Manchester in that gravel parking lot, as you mentioned, but that's not, that's not what's on the contract by my client.
So, I think you, between the two, you hit the nail on the head, is that there's some desire for some flexibility. There's one parcel for sale, but there's other parcels that might really be in the rubric of what could happen because they're owned by the same parties.
With that, any further questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Has been moved and approved? Moved and seconded. Can I call Rome?
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Rowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Boaz.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Chair Strather.
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting, yes.
So, if it's fair enough to you, what are we to contact the Alderman and tell him that was approved? That will save the committee with the representatives, we're quite eager to have a discussion.
Yes, for sure. Thank you, appreciate it.
There is, there are two other items we've got to deal. Do we want to have the general conversation on Brian's here?
No.
Or the action item, which is the? Action item number two is 2232 South Grand, and Emily's going to be our presenter.
Hello. Thank you, Karen. Welcome, everyone. This is the man who is here tonight. So, this is the redevelopment plan for two parcels at 2232 and 2254 to 56 South Grand. It's a total of 1.9 acres, and the buildings that are on it, and that northern lot is the vacant former YMCA building, and then on the corner lot there is the Pelican building that is also vacant. This is two separate development projects that have been bundled together in the same redevelopment area. So, we have two both developmental agencies represented here tonight, and MBR Shen and Villa, which is represented by Emily Ward.
Michelle's Alderman's office.
And then also, so that is for the.
I think that's the television.
For the Palos. And then, MBR, South Grand property, which is the entity for Josh Udeloff, and who's here with Alton Strielfe, is represented by Hush Blackwell, Matt Hoffman is here. So, we've got a mix of them.
Right, right, right. I will say, I will say for the record, earlier today, she wasn't speaking as highly about David Richardson. He was a little rude on the phone.
That's why I didn't let him come.
Right, good.
Can I get your name right?
You don't have it yet. Good as I say it, anyway.
Okay, so these two developments are combined in these two parcels, and there'll be a two-phase process for each development, so I do want to point out that we've got a new resolution tonight. There's a change on the third page that reflects the phasing of each development, because they're still happening in these phases. So, just wanted to point that out to you. Both parcels that are done to H, area commercial district, and the proposed uses, both are used as by rights in that district. So, the YMCA building would be demolished, and then there'd be new construction of 116 apartments, 131 parking spaces to go with it, and then the renovation of the Pelican building would be the relocation of the Domino's. Is it the Domino's? Is it the relocation of the Domino's from South Grand?
South Grand, correct.
Okay. All right, so here's an aerial of the site. This is the YMCA building that will be no more.
Spreading with.
So, parking area between the two buildings, and then the northern side of the Pelican building, the Pelican building from the corner. Can you remember the great sign that used to be? Okay, so to show the residential properties, I did sort of an aerial through Google Earth. The photo on the left-hand side shows the single-family residential properties that are surrounding the north side of the site where the apartment building would go. And then, the multi-family residential, the right-hand picture, is along Shenandoah there. And so, you can see there's a mix of uses, and then this is a commercial building, commercial uses along South Grand. Again, commercial buildings directly across the street in that left-hand picture on South Grand, and then identity residential apartment building on. Here's a site plan for 2232, where YMCA building is. I've also got an elevation that you'll see the front of it, but you could be having a school party and walk over to Domino's and get a few stuffs.
Maybe later.
Oh. That's so much better.
Really freaking bad.
All right, this is also an image of the apartment.
And we determine this is not in a historic district?
Precinct problem, it's a.
Initial design for renovation of the Pelican building. Looking at the strategic land use plan, this is a specialty use, specialty mixed-use area. And the combination of these developments brings a mix of uses to the site that blends in with the residential and commercial uses that surround it. So, it does in fact comply with strategic land use plan. Because it complies with the strategic land use plan, and because the use is permitted by rather an H district, and because this is the potential revitalization of an empty site that's been sitting there for a long time on South Grand, we do recommend that you forward your recommendation of approval to the redevelopment council. Any questions for me, or for the developer?
So, the giant parking in the back, is, obviously, this is an improvement as it relates to what's currently there, for the most part, the development being, you know, great, but with the residential along the back there and part lining the parking lot, are you guys putting up any fencing, or like what's the plan?
The entire fence would have, you know, some sort of hedge shrub all the way around parking perimeter, along with any MSD requirements, we have to ensure more quality control, and there'll also be an ornamental aluminum fence, probably black, wrought, pro-wrought iron look, to secure that and provide additional screening from the adjacent properties. We've actually met with the vast majority of folks in the single-family homes in the Coffin Heights neighborhood who are presenting to the Broad Board on February 7, and we have received a contingent of support letter from them to Alderman and Graffia.
Cool. I really do appreciate what you're doing with the Pelican building and putting that dominoes in there, I mean, dominoes aside.
Sure.
I'm not the only one that's thinking much more about it. I will, additional comments can be made. He is very optimistic, putting a Domino's into a historic property, very unique, and that sense of, you know, and doing it for his owner.
That's what I appreciate.
And he's hoping he gets more walk-up and drive-in, sit-down restaurants that's not typical of Domino's. So, one of his investments in the city, and I was happy being a person outside in the area, that he's trying to take Domino's from just being a delivery, and to be something that is more of a restaurant operation.
You know, I, it's, I guess I didn't realize that's what was happening in Pelicans. When I saw it, I just kind of like laughed a little bit because it was unexpected, but I think it shouldn't be unexpected for us. We have all these great buildings, and oftentimes, operations like Domino's come in and they say, yeah, we want to knock all this stuff down and put up this basic-looking Domino's that you would expect, and I think that hurts our architecture, hurts our communities, and when you see, it's going to cost more money to do that. And so, that's, I appreciate that, and I think unfortunately for other folks who would like to do a little bit less, this creates more of a precedent for us to be able to say, yeah, if you're really serious about being in St. Louis, you can invest a bit more and do something that.
Have you heard that story?
Yeah, one of the issues that, the reason our firm, Andy Consulting, is about Mr. Rattler, was for that very reason. He was trying to figure out what would tax abatement, and with the CIV for the area, and all the tax issues, how would that equate? Because he is doing more than the typical, first, more than the typical of Domino's. Because he is doing more than the typical, first, more than the typical of Domino's to, because it was cheaper for him to just tear it down and put up a standard, you know, box. And the second issue, of course, is he is, is a, a owner that's willing to take on having a kind of work with space upstairs, whichever way it goes, it's going to be two spaces and another commercial. So he's taking on additional state as an investor in overall real estate. Um, but the important thing that, which is what's working out these gentlemen is, he really wanted a corner and the ability to have a good corner and still be able to get the benefits of a commercial, so he might have a commercial. He is using, uh, state and federal historic credit, um, but it's still a very borderline investment because it is a very extensive, with the size of the footprints of the units you can imagine, everything. It's good just looking at the roof there.
Yeah.
Because none of it's very easy to renovate on the inside because there's additions and there's first floors and second floors. And, uh, the only unfortunate, there's quite a bit that's in pretty good shape on the inside. The law office that last used it, quite a lot, but did some pretty good work apart, but the rest of it, particularly exterior isn't...
I imagine it's going to be a good investment. Um, having worked across the street from the current Domino's at Hollywood Video for a number of years, uh, when I was younger, it's, it's a tough place to, to operate a pizza place with all the traffic, it's not great parking, it's mostly a delivery operation. But you're moving with a hundred and sixteen units right next door, more or less, in a residential neighborhood, I think it's going to be a, a good move.
How long has the Pelican been living?
Well, I developed a confident date category on the street and I can tell you that was built in two thousand and seven, since we witnessed it that, as was the why. We were praying, uh, that somebody, this gentleman had the whole side of the, there's many, as you should have noted, there's many proposals from Quip Trips to McDonald's to, uh, to a big two-story office retail over space. And, uh, and I think this is the, uh, this is when that will happen. Um, so it's been at least that long and it would certainly be nice for the sale of condos to have that across the street. Their design, I think you like the, the modern design and it'd be different, they'd make a long brand, uh, because, uh, we have a very traditional, sort of historic district, we think of County Gate, but I think this is...
They had to move it to the Compton Heights neighborhood association.
No, we can't just say everything looks like that, so...
And who has the old Pelican sign?
I have no idea. You don't know, we've been asked that question a couple of times and it's going to look like a building or not.
No, we rescued, we, we took it.
Is it?
We were able to take it, but then it was determined missing from our warehouse.
It is for, uh, the next year.
No.
I wonder if we have the rescue of the turbid.
Oh, wow.
In the parking lot, um, and like everybody's saying, this is a modern design, you know, in, in an area of town that's kind of fun. I'm walking, it's close to the, the medical center. Are you doing any accommodations for electric car tracking stations, things like that?
We will likely have a charging car station or two located near the building. Uh, we're doing another project right now of similar size and scale, um, in a different community, but, uh, we're putting two in that one. Um, and, you know, drilling in on the details of can you put a universal charge station and a Tesla station, some of those, you know, limitations that exist within the infrastructure right now, but I would imagine we would install something like that. I cannot say that we're down to that level of trouble.
Since you mentioned Tesla's charging station, what's the going rate or the anticipated rate of the residential apartments?
So the, we anticipate the range of the apartment rental rate to be anywhere from about seven or eight hundred dollars on the lower end for the smaller project, uh, products and then the larger two bedrooms on the upper floors in the two thousand dollar a month neighborhood.
So would you be able to move in?
I don't know before, I suspect.
I always like to mention out of these, out of projects that people might not notice, that the street that goes back there, if you're real back there, that's pretty much a one fancy driveway for the people of Compton Heights to drive there. That's, that's pretty much their access to the garage.
And, sir, Mr. Chris Sherman, um, you can see the delineation point where it's been vacated between the newer pavement and the older aggregate rock. I didn't notice that.
So that, the fence is, is really therefore adjacent to a road as opposed to the backyard of...
I just thought I'd point that out, that's something that people don't see when they drive by, because parking lots are the mess and it's a park station, isn't it?
It's a church. On the other side of the neighborhood, it's a counting office. The gentleman owns, has a counting office operating out of it.
And you said you're meeting with the neighborhood on the...
We've met with the neighborhood several times, um, and they have provided their contingent layer of support, waiting on further details. However, they have their quarterly board meeting on February seventh where we're providing an additional formal presentation of our kind of further design development.
I won't dig myself a talk about the YMCA, but I...
Everyone else does, so feel free.
I do remember when the pool was actually a pool.
We'd be happy to take you on a tour of the building.
Nah, it's been enough time in that room.
Any further questions?
Move approval?
Thank you.
Seconded and approved, previous role. Called the previous role, any additions?
No, Jackson, previous role stands. It passes. With that approval and the two items, and one other issue that we were right now, I guess, Don, are you leading?
Nope, so, uh... I'll ask Emily and Roman, just to lead the conversation we're having, that's just a brief follow-up on our last month's discussion that we ought to, at least, uh, give you the definition of what blight is and that might stimulate some discussion for some further research, but that's what we've prepared for you. Emily and Roman?
So in our, uh, last meeting, um, we were having a conversation about, um, whether or not one of the redevelopment plans, um, that was up was actually, could be considered blight. And Alton Lloyd raised the question of how do we define blight and how do we, um, make the best choices in terms of how to use and apply that definition? Um, and so we promised to bring the definitions of all, all the definitions of blight are available to us to use the tool. Um, there's really only three different distinct definitions available to us. One is the, um, what comes during the very revised statutes in chapters ninety-nine and one hundred. We both use that definition of a blighted area. There's a different definition...
Ninety-nine is when you see LCRAs plans, PIA occasionally, but very rarely refers them and that's in chapter one hundred, planned industrial expansion.
Is this available to us on, on our hard copy or printed, though, just so we can have for our personal records?
Yes.
Looking for Valentine's Day present?
Anything I can get, yeah. I'm trying to keep postal workers working, man.
Um, and then the two definitions below are slightly different. One comes from the chapter three three-three, which we employ when we go larger redevelopment areas such as Slum and Town, a development area. And the city definition of blight within our revised code, chapter eleven on what to do redevelopment of a blighted area. Adapt the chapter three five-three definition, um, and you can see the differences in blue text there. So it specifies the Board of Aldermen as a state of authority and then it adds the language existing...
There's some words there that you don't know, I'm assuming, by the way. She's a reminder of...
One of the key variables is the economic liability and so forth. You don't necessarily need to see a, a blown out or a fire damaged building in some places where a, a building is, is not just being used for any productive use, whether it be a parking lot or a vacant lot. That's where that economic liability comes from. So it's not necessarily... Would merit the, the site to be, um, deemed to be blighted. And then under the, um, the city revised code on that second last line, it also, sort of along the same lines, references the inability to pay reasonable taxes. And that's the city basically saying that, hey, this, the property probably has a better use than it's currently.
So neither one of those definitions has a footnote for this from Webster's. Two things that sometimes here discussed often is it's not blighted lot, it's not blighted parcel, it's blighted area. There's not an indication of what size this could be, uh, but the word area is telling to say that it certainly can be more than a single parcel. And most of us planning likes to think of the fact that you blight an area that's of some scale because what you're following up is where the redevelopment plan, the change in area. But of course, in St. Louis and other places, it's dissipated to also just referring to a single parcel. And it's sometimes harder when you do a single parcel as opposed to an area. In an area, you want to find the predominance of blight. In a, in a single parcel, uh, it, it is what it is and, uh, could be pretty humble in what are the characteristics of the blight. The other part that tends to happen is it doesn't say by, uh, a blighted area in a portion of the city where, um, professional certified X, Y, Z folks have determined, uh, these standards happen. It says, which the legislative authority has spoken and make a determination that it's blighted, we, we substitute in the Board of Aldmen. It's, it's a, uh, it's kind of a catch-all, uh... Well, I think, uh... So, so I guess the dog? So the, the, um... I, I, I want to point out two things. People have come to find that I'm not the biggest fan of us using the redevelopment toolbox for a single parcel. Uh, and that's because it's supposed to be for a blighted area and redeveloping an area versus just passing a tax abatement on. Emily, it was, was, I forgot to ask these guys, the key question for the slide that's behind you, was that first line. It, oops, that slide.
I think they have a tree in the middle of this. That's a green space.
That, that tree is going to die.
They're going to be bench around it and pick the area, but you just don't see it yet.
Yeah, and is, is, the redevelopment plan that we saw, actually for the redevelopment plan, is for two lots that were there.
Right.
And so, so what Emily discovered during the course of it was that, oh, and we're looking at a redevelopment plan and what their goals are from LCRAs, there are two developers. One's doing the historic building and one's doing the old building. So there's not two redevelopment plans per se. Sometimes LCRAs wouldn't, might have split it into two redevelopment plans, but it's one redevelopment plan and there'll be two developers designated to have the rights for it, so...
Is it advantageous for them to do it that way? Why would they approach it that way?
They knew your preference.
Yeah, that's just, that's, I was struggling with the way to say that. But, but the, the...
You're lying down, Adam.
But the irony of the, and the question, and Patrick knows I got a little grumpy about resources today, is that I, I, I wanted to ask them, by doing that, did, by making these two designations, did LCRAs, LCRAs extracts a fee from somebody? And did they manage to extract two fees? And, and, and for the moment, I'm going to be optimistic tonight and say, no, it was just one, but I'm actually going to check tomorrow, so, but, uh... Back to what, what was, was, they think, is this is the redevelopment plan area that we did for Slum?
What's that?
And, and this is the actual, yes, this is the blighting study for it, but we were doing redevelopment plan, it was ours, it was, it was our, our contact. And the blighting study for it was, is, is firmly documented with a lot of stuff. It's what I like, it's for an area, it's actually a particularly big area. Uh, but we get, we get, and when Emily presented last week about that one parking lot in Kings Highway and calling it blighted, my suggestion was it would have been better that, in, in using the toolbox, that we blighted a larger area, all the parking lots in the, in, in that area. And, uh, which is a long way to say, I think, that, uh, in the next year or two, you will see some pressure to change those definitions.
Who, who controls those definitions?
Well, the city controls the revised code.
Yeah, I'm saying, who, is it, you know, I mean, who is...
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance?
Yeah, yeah. And, and then the, the, the state is the state, so we know that. But there's, there's a couple, uh, groups in town that have some, a couple columns, people that want to revise how we use incentives. Uh, and those include, include numbers persons. And then there are people in town that want to revise how we use incentives, that are sort of policy and equity type folks. And I think there'll be some shaking and, and muttering around, but there will be changes to some of the city's procedures for, for redevelopment plan. And then my comment to the, to those groups is fine and dandy, but it really needs to, it's a fine and dandy in the city. They might be able to do some differentiations between the various healths of the various part of the city. But the, the main premise for these statutes to exist anyway is to serve an area that is in need of reinvestment, like the inner city. And, you know, my punchline goes, not downtown Clayton. And, and so Clayton uses the same definition of the top two for their, for their, for their blight followed by, by, uh, tax incentives, followed by the newspaper article you probably saw today, where there's a group of citizens that are now challenging in court that they blighted an area and given a redevelopment. So, uh, my, my, uh, deck chairs to this analogy is the city should have every available tool authorized from the state to be used somewhere within our jurisdiction. And there are jurisdictions like Clayton, which just should be...
No.
You, if, if you're using anything, it's you're using a very light version and we get the robust version. And at the moment, we both get the same version.
Didn't know that insanitary was a word. Apparently it's British.
So we, we, we frankly was, were thinking about this just at the last minute, but we promised to give these definitions and brought them. We'll, we'll, uh, happily share them with you electronically.
Yeah, I, you know, it's a point, it's unfortunate that Alderman Boy is not here to receive this information, but if you email on Almond, that way we can be certain that he has it with that. So the last part, David, there's a lot of nebulous words in here like or. So that triggers a lot of, you know, or, 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 or.
There's, there's not many ands.
Yeah, I didn't see a lot of ands in there at all. With that, any other discussions or questions?
So is LCR monitoring how much, is somebody doing the math on this? And that's what I often find myself asking is, is when we are putting in apartments over and things tax abating. And how many of those are we doing?
You want my good answer or you want my cynical one?
I'll get the cynical one after every drink, so...
I'm going to go back a notch to, to a time that, that Richard remembers. There was a hyperactive talented woman by the name of Barbara Geisler. And, uh, she, she was the mayor's person overlooking development, so she would make things pollinated between, between departments. And her skill set is incredible. She's an architect, very numbers oriented, and, and then went to school for law school. And so she would end up doing the analysis, the financial analysis, often herself. And that gets dissimated. The Aldmen, uh, and remember the central corridor has Aldmen that is, an area is just separated by a ward line on one side of the street and the other. And we were relying a lot, we still do rely a lot for Aldmen to say how much tax abatement. And they have now more universally rebelled that somebody do some damn financial analysis. So in the last about a year, is that right, David, we, SLBC has hired a financial analysis to run the numbers. to run the numbers. It's a learning experience.
Okay.
And, and it's had some controversies between consultants, staff doing numbers. And then the other part, and this is tricky, is checking somebody's financial math is one thing. Taking a gander at what their market is and looking at their market studies is part of the equation. But one of the things that we don't necessarily have on staff is analyzing what their true costs of constructions are, and that's the baseline. So they, they're supposed to identify a gap, their private equity, their loan is only going to get them so far, there'll be so much return on investment in that gap. So getting a little better at that, but it's still a work in progress. And one of these efforts is to try to put some parameters to how we do that.
My question, do we keep, well, if I will, you mean like your office? Keep some type of like, I don't know, not necessarily interactive, but some type of map for the city that shows all the areas that have been blighted? Would you just have to kind of like, hold file and kind of figure out what is.
Is, we were trying to do that for a while. I just had an occasion to do some research and I was reminded that when I first started with the agency, it had a $2.7 million budget and 26 employees, and that was from one source. And now we cobble from three sources for two different budget years and it's, what did I put it out the other day? 1.5 million and 18 employees. So we don't do that anymore.
We're looking at the planning staff right now.
So, but the good news is, part of our computer technology, when we were robust, we did some things quite creatively and a little bit with Scotch tape and billware, we did just approve.
I'm not saying anything that's so like technology savvy, but just be filing that if it's never.
I'm not sure why they're filing that.
Like, all these areas that get approved for blighting, is there any way to just at once look at all the areas and say, well, they're blighted?
No, we can do it on our computers. And if we, and if we were a little bit more robust, as we used to have, a research department with people in it, they would do that type of stuff and make it be for a more positive interface. We can track it down, but it's by hook or by crook. Because one of the, because one of the things that's unfortunate is, we see two types of blight, redevelopment plans, we see, we see the chapter 99, and Roman and Emily would have put this geography into a system, and we see the 353s, but we don't see the tips of that blight.
So once this area is blighted like as we did, when does it come off, does it come off after the development? I mean, when, when does that expire?
So, when the conditions change.
So it has to be redefined at some point?
Yeah. Well, it becomes mute in a way, when, when, so when it's a single parcel, it becomes mute when, when something new and as vital as this that's constructed.
So there's no advantage of still being blighted after the parcel?
And that's one of the reasons why these, these tend to have a combination legislation is blight and redevelopment, because it's immediately being followed supposedly with the redevelopment and that's changing blight. So in this area, where we have a whole mass of 395 acres, some of it's going to be a long time before the blights, we will, so the blights, the ants, and the ants, and the ants.
Do you want, do you want the legal bit though? There's a technical answer, which is that the blight actually remains in a legal sense because the plan is there and the legislation's there until it sends us. So I believe they're usually in effect for 25 years.
Tell me that about chapter 99, convince me.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm just saying, the legislation that the Board of Aldermen passes says it's in effect for 25 years, and I think it automatically renews unless the Board of Aldermen chooses not to renew it. So we occasionally get contacted asking for these to be canceled.
So the area we just approved today, in let's say maybe five years, hopefully the apartment can be up and running, that area will still be deemed as blighted?
On the books legally?
Yeah.
That's why I said, this is the legal answer. I mean, Don's absolutely right practically speaking, but yes, and so, so if this development doesn't happen, it's still on the books for the next people or the next people or the next people. And if development does happen, there may be at some point in the future a change in the property and somebody's going to turn it up on title and they'll ask for us to terminate it if it hasn't died to natural death.
And that's a good reminder, that's one of the things that's important, that we, we love having the developers tell us what they're going to do, but this development may never materialize and then it would stay blighted. So the incentive would be there for somebody new to count until they corrected.
And then I guess the caveat to that, but the incentive, if they do do the development, burns off, and so you've got, again, on the books and ordinance, utilizing tax abatement that's taken place and is no longer available.
But if we're trying to affect the change here and they don't do the change, instead of blighted, they're going to afford development for somebody else to get the benefit.
Blighted has been discussed it. Any other questions? With that, is there a motion to, again, some of, it'd be known that the record, that you are out under my leadership at an hour and 40 minutes. Hey, who cares? We covered it 100%. Hey, we covered it 100%.